I gain one and I lose one, so. We're, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'll call the Salina City Commission September 21st meeting to order. I'd like to thank those that have been waiting patiently for us. We had a study session at the TPEC and there was more people there than at a K-State football game this year, so it took us a while to get out and to get here. So with that, we've called the meeting to order. I would ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided.
Yes.
Thank you. We will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Will those that are able please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple of words and proclamations today.
Item 3.1, the month of September 2020, as Big Brothers Big Sisters Month in the city of Salina, Amanda Otto, CEO with Big Brothers and Big Sisters will read the proclamation. Good afternoon. Whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters of Salina enables life-changing mentoring relationships to ignite the power and promise of youth in our community. And whereas the mentoring model of Big Brothers Big Sisters is a proven effective strategy that helps youth by matching them with a caring, responsible adult role model who can provide guidance, direction, and build their confidence. And whereas mentoring strengthens our local economic and social well-being by helping change the course of at-risk youth lives, helping young people fulfill their potential, encouraging healthy family relationships, and promoting more vibrant communities. And whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters has been making an impact on the lives of young people in Celine County since 1968 by partnering with parents and guardians, volunteers, and others in the community to help youth achieve higher aspirations, greater confidence, better relationships, avoidance of risky behavior, and educational success. And whereas research has shown that youth engaged in healthy and safe one-to-one mentoring relationships are more likely to graduate high school, avoid incarceration, and avoid delinquent behavior. And whereas many of Salina's youth are in need of a caring adult mentor in their lives, and closing this mentoring gap will take more investment, partnerships, and volunteers ready to make a difference in the life of a child. And whereas every adult has something to offer a child, and every child has something to offer to our community. And whereas residents of this community are making a profound difference in the lives of our youth by serving as mentors or supporting our mentoring programs. And whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness of the importance of mentoring, recognize the dedicated individuals who serve as mentors, and encourage more citizens to help build a brighter future for Salina's youth through mentoring. And now therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Big Brothers Big Sisters Month. I encourage everyone to visit bbbsalina.org and learn more about how to get involved in igniting the potential of youth in our community.
Thank you, Amanda. I know September's about over, but do we have, do you have any upcoming events?
We do, hopefully, in November on the 21st, which will kick off the downtown Christmas activities. We'll do the Frosty Fun Runs, hopefully in person. If not, Plan B is to do that virtually, so.
I prefer virtually myself, and nobody knows. Well, I didn't know what month was Big Brothers Big Sisters Month because Big Brothers may be one of the most active organizations we have in Celine County, and it seems like you have something going on all the time, so.
Yes, we try to.
So I have a proclamation for you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Item 3.2, the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2020, as Constitution Week in the city of Salina, Melissa Stouchlick, Regent of the Local Daughters of the American Revolution, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2020, marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the 1787 Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of this great country designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Michael L. Hoppick, as Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties and witness whereof I have hereunto assigned, set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Salina to be affixed this 21st day of September in the year of our Lord 2020. And signed, Michael Hoppick.
Thank you. And do you have any, anything scheduled for?
The 17th, there were bells chimed at 4:00 PM. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we're not in the schools anymore, so a lot of things that we would have done in public have been set aside, but hopefully next year we'll do a little bit better on that.
It's changed a lot of our lives, so I have a proclamation for you, so. Okay, with that, it lead, we come to the Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum's a chance for individuals to come forth if they have something they'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda. We please ask that you give your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Do we have anyone?
Counsel, can you rethink?
Your name, your name, please.
Dalton McDowell.
Thank you.
Counsel, can you rethink your mask policy? If you look, North, or South Dakota Governor Kristi Noem never enacted any of this that Kansas Governor did or what you guys have done, and they've had far less COVID-19 outbreak cases. They even had the biggest bikers rally in South Dakota, no issues. Get rid of these masks. This is a, this is just a political stunt.
Do we have anyone else?
Miranda Bachman. I just wanted to kind of reiterate and follow up.
Pull the microphone down so we can hear you a little better. There you go. Thank you.
I just kinda wanted to reiterate and follow up with the 1033 program and the Sunflower Coalition's proposal. I support banning the 1033 program. I would like to point out that private funds are, are obtained and used from the police department, and I really think that if this was, that if we needed military weapons, or if something was to happen in the future where we wanted to reassess the 1033 program, it could be done as like a public, as a public entity instead of, instead of from the city maybe. I feel like that there would be other ways to go around, and I understand that you'd have to buy the military weapons at the full price, but I think that it would be better to buy them at the full price and new instead of used and old from the surplus. So I just kind of wanted to follow through on that, and then not to mention the fact that it takes them a long time to deploy the AVC. And so I think that if they needed to get one, they would be able to get one from Topeka or some of these other cities around here in just amount, in just about the same amount of time as it takes to get the approval and the car deployed. Also, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that, that these meetings, like the one today, you know, just the people that were there, it shows that it's not, that it's not open to the people who it needs to be open to, in my opinion, and the only reason that I was able to come is because I was able to finagle some things with my schedule. But I think most people obviously work during the day, and I think that in future forums, hopefully, we do have a second public forum. Maybe we could do something like in the evenings, maybe on, who knows, different weekdays, whatever. I know that it imposes schedules, and I know that it's hard, and I know you guys are elected officials and don't get paid much at all, but I just, I would appreciate the opportunity to address people that need, that need addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Darren Henderson. I live at 4326 Turner Lane here in Salina. Been here for about seven years, and I was watching the forum earlier online, and based off what the lady just said, I run a company here in town. I got about 100 employees. And on a topic that's as important as what we're talking about today, I encouraged anybody and everybody at the company to come up here or go to that forum to speak because that's what our rights entitle us to do. So I also have a, a specific instance that happened to me. Seven years I've moved here to Salina. Any of you guys that know, Paul Mai happened to be with me that day. And I was actually, as you can tell, I'm a, I'm a Caucasian, and I was pulled over by the Salina Police Department. A little frustrated at the time, but I want to tell you something. I'm glad those guys are out there doing what they're doing after 14 years in the military. Served in Desert Shield, Desert Storm. Had we not had the equipment and stuff that we needed to be able to do the things that we needed to do, would be the same thing as sending these guys out there in harm's way to protect us as citizens without having the things that they needed every day. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 14, 2020.
Do I have a motion, or do we have any additions or deletions?
I move to approve the minutes of September 14, 2020.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes for September 14th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. That leads us to administration.
Item 7.1, Celine County Jail Presentation.
Commissioners, my blue sheet was real brief. The administrator, county administrator, approached me about the opportunity to present to you the jail project. We would typically do something like that in study session, but given our study session, study session schedule and the timing of the ballot initiative, probably it merited going ahead and putting on your regular agenda. So between the sheriff and the county administrator, they have a presentation they'd like to make on the upcoming jail project. It'll be on the upcoming ballot. I'll turn it over to the sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time. The Celine County Jail project is something that we've been working on for quite some time. A little bit about the current county jail is built in 1962. The sheriff's office was. And in 1995, we had an addition that added 152 more beds. We kept 40 beds in the old facility, and unfortunately, since 2010, we've had more inmates in bed space in the county jail. This is just a quick graph. It goes back to the year 2000. It gives the average daily population in the Celine County jail, and you can, it's kind of hard to see, but the second line down is 200 beds, so really, any, any time in that timeline that's past 200, or years where the average daily population was past 200, and since 2010, we have been. And we've never fallen below that 192 beds in any of the last 10 years. The red lines just indicate the most inmates we had in jail in any of those, 2014 on. Reason that we don't have the prior is we had a software update that allowed us to capture this information. There's always inmates coming in out of the jail, so it's a little hard to capture how many are in at one point, but in 16, 17, and 18, we passed 300 inmates in our county jail. We're in custody of the sheriff. One thing that happened is in 2011, in the fall of 2011, we'd been dealing with a lot of fights. We'd had a lot of turnover in the jail, and it forced us to start contract housing inmates outside. It's for the safety of the officers and the inmates that are in custody. So we started, like I say, in October of 2011, housing inmates outside. You can kind of see, I'm not going to go through every number, but as the population has grown, the number of inmates that are housed outside has grown along with it. And we, at the high point, we had almost 95 inmates out, and that's an average. At times, we're over 100, and at times, it was lower, but that's the average through the years. The thing that has grown along with that is the number of trips that we've had to take inmates back and forth, because we don't, unfortunately, we don't just take them to the county jail and drop them off and leave them there. They have doctor's appointments. They have appointments with the court that we have to bring them back. They have motions and hearings, and so unless they were sentenced to county jail and, in that lucky case that we have an inmate that's sentenced to 90 days, and we could just send them there and leave them for 90 days and bring them back, that'd be the ideal situation, but we really don't have a lot of inmates that are in that situation. This is kind of the bottom line of what this has cost us, and this is up through the end of 2019. The county spent 6.228 million in contract housing costs, and I included the trip costs in there. The thing about the contract housing cost, all that money that we sent, that's all gone to these other counties we contracted with, Washington County, Cloud County, lot of Ottawa County, McPherson, Butler. We've got inmates in Rice County. So we're, and we've got contracts with several other counties that we've used when the population's been up. It's been down a little bit this last year, which allowed us to keep them a little closer. That, that price is $35 a day per inmate. It was 30 when we first started doing this. That price is 35. That's not set in statute. There's nothing that requires these jails to take those inmates. So what happened when 2017, when we hired, we ended up having to look for another housing jail. We were paying 30, they wanted 35. I didn't have any choice but to pay them 35, and as soon as the other counties heard I was paying them 35, all the rest of them wanted 35. So it's not, this is not a controlled thing. If they, if they told me tomorrow they wanted 50, I don't think we have much option other than pay them 50 or start looking farther out. I've got a contract with Ford County. I hope I don't get to the point where we have to start hauling inmates to Ford County because that drives that trip expense up, and it's a major problem for us. Some of these stats I've already told you, but they're on the sheets that were handed out. One of the things that I want to touch on is that the inmate rehabilitation goals, we want to, the county jail's not set up to be a rehabilitation center or anything, but we want to give them some mental health services and some basic programming services that will help them when they hit the community. Because if we have inmates in jail that are just coming in, going out, coming in, going out, and we can't provide them at least some sort of, some structure and some programming to help them with some life skills and a place maybe to, to go to and get things in place with Central Kansas Mental Health, and once they leave our facility, they're going to come back. And we know that because they come back, and I just pulled a day, a little about a year and a half ago, went through the numbers of everybody that's in jail, and if you'd been in jail that day, you'd been averaged 12 times. So when you think about 250 inmates that have been there an average of 12 times, that something's not working when we're just going to kick them out to bring them back into jail. I talked about the, the facility itself. We've, we have a lot of failures in the facility, a lot of issues with plumbing. In particular, the last couple of years, sewer, sewer lines have been a problem for us. Right now, I've got an eight-man cell in the old jail, which is where we're housing the females. That's closed because we had a fixture collapse, and then if you can imagine that, that jail that was built in 1962, you don't go down to Lowe's or Nards and pick up a toilet. So we had to order in a special order in a toilet to be made. It's going to be eight weeks before we can get those eight beds back. And we also have a sewer line that's collapsed in the booking area right now that is to the shower, where all the inmates that come in are showered before they're put in population in case they have lice or anything else that they might be carrying into them with the jail. And so we're struggling with that issue. The one part of the population that's really surprised even the experts at the time, they built us 20 beds to hold our female inmates. Our female inmate population has went, averages between 45 and 60. So that, that, you know, at the time when the jail was built, we were looking at eight, eight or seven or eight inmates, female inmates, and now they're 45 to 60. So they didn't really anticipate that. And the place where the females are housed, we don't have any way to classify them. The classification is simply just saying, you're a maximum inmate, you're at more risk. Well, you don't want some kid that, that made a mistake and lands himself in jail because he made some really dumb mistake in with someone who's a lifetime criminal that didn't come, wouldn't come to jail to make new friends with bad people. We want them to come to jail to get things straight with the court and hopefully get back out better than they came in. COVID-19 has been a huge impact to us because what you see in this picture is the housing is the medical unit for the jail, the whole thing. That's, that's what we have for medical. There's no housing. We don't have any medical cells. We have a, basically a small room that they can come in, they do 14-day assessments on the inmates, or if someone has a toothache, or if they have some medical need to come and see, they get in a fight and they need to get cleaned up or whatever. That's the one housing, that's the one area that we have that's for medical, but we don't have any negative airflow cells in the facility. The facility shares one air system with the entire jail, so all that air in there is just circulated through the whole facility. We don't have a real good way to keep ill inmates from each other. There's five cells in the booking area, five single cells. And with people that come in intoxicated, they tie up cells. We get people in jail with COVID, they tie up jails. We do have a positive right now in jail, and the way we found a couple of them is they were set to go to DOC, and I got them there that admissions to DOC require delays because we require testing. At one point, we had a 20-person backlog to go to DOC because of this. DOC's got the same issue in prison with COVID. They're having struggles getting inmates in, but, so when the contracted facilities are hesitant to house our inmates, so with us finding out this weekend that we have a positive for 14 days, they're not going to take any more of our inmates. And I don't blame them. That's, I wouldn't want them either. If they have, if they have someone with COVID in their jail, I don't want their inmates coming to mine either. It's just, it's really proven to be an issue for us, COVID-19 has. But the one line at the bottom, the new jail admissions that have to be segregated for 14 days, that's a huge struggle for us. And what we've had to do is take a maximum security cell, which means we have to move inmates that should be in maximum security out, put them in another portion of the housing, in a different class. them in another portion of the housing and a different classification, and well, if me and Phil happen to come to jail on the same day, we're going to spend 14 days in the same cell together, because we can't be put in with people that come in tomorrow. We can't be put in with people coming the next day. We have to be separated for 14 days to make sure that we're not positive for COVID, or not showing any symptoms. What have we done so far to, with the jail? And when it went over in 2010, and in 2011, we contacted the national.